And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we have a moment of silence. And if we could particularly dedicate our moment of silence, somewhere along of our thoughts, to former Mayor Rich Buchanan. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason for a COVID-19 update. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A quick update, over 92,000 doses of the vaccine have been administered here in McLean County. From all sources, the positive cases continue to rise, 164 new cases since Friday. So please continue to be following the public safety protocols. And then also, as Camille Rodriguez, County Administrator, always shares before our council meetings in these comments, how appreciative the county is that city's providing the arena as a vaccination site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, now we have recognitions and appointments. And our first recognition is one in memory of a wonderful public servant. And we do have Judy Buchanan here, the former First Lady of Bloomington. And Judy, how you doing, Judy? Can you hear us? Thank you. You can unmute yourself because anything you want to say, we'd be honored to have you comment. But as a proclamation member of frankly, a good friend, a valued colleague, an incredible activist who we will really miss, and that is Rich Buchanan. I'm sorry. Whereas the city reflects on the life and accomplishments of former Mayor Richard Buchanan, who passed away on Tuesday, March 30, 2021. And whereas Rich is fondly remembered for his community service, guiding our city as mayor from 1977 to 1985, serving on the city council for two terms, and on the liquor commission for more than three decades. Whereas through his astute gift for listening to all sides, he made people feel included and heard, even if they were on opposing sides. And whereas his love for the community was shown through his presence, support of business, and his energy for helping others. And whereas Rich and his wife Judy were honored in 2019 as McLean County history makers by the McLean County Museum of History. And whereas even as Rich battled Alzheimer's, his words inspire us. Quote, "I am in a battle with Alzheimer's. There is no cure. I'm going to lose this battle, but I've already won the war." Unquote. And whereas we extend our deepest condolences to Buchanan family, and we're thankful for his contributions to the city of Bloomington. And now therefore, I Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby urge you to recognize Rich Buchanan for his service to our community, to celebrate his life, which will be remembered fondly by all of us who knew him. Thank you. Judy, did you, in accepting this, did you, any words that you want to add?
Well, first of all, thank you all very much. Rich lived his life well. He, our whole family loves the city of Bloomington, and he had a special love, loved being mayor, loved being a part of the city, and just loved the town. So this is a great recognition. We will treasure it. We appreciate it, and thank you for remembering.
And Judy, thank you. We're sending hugs and kisses to you as well. Thank you. We really appreciate, much appreciate Rich. If we can give him a special round of applause. Thank you. And thank you, Judy, for all you've done. And we appreciated all of what the entire Buchanan family has done and meant to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to proclamation recognizing April 18th to 24th, 2021, as medical laboratory prof- Again, there we go. Can everybody hear me now? I apologize. It's Medical Laboratory Professionals Week, April 18th, 2024, excuse me, 18th through the 24th, 2021. Whereas the practice of modern medicine at the exacting standards we now enjoy would be impossible without the scientific tests performed daily in the medical laboratory. And whereas the maintenance of these standards and progress toward improvement of the quality of laboratory services depends on the dedicated efforts of professional clinical laboratory science practitioners. And whereas the 24/7 work of these practitioners is critical to keeping the wheels of healthcare turning, and has been especially impactful as the healthcare community works to combat the COVID-19 virus. And whereas these highly trained professionals make invaluable contributions to quality healthcare and save countless lives each day by providing reliable results for prevention, diagnosis, detection, and treatment of disease. And whereas laboratory medicine is an honorable profession that should be recognized by all individuals as vital to the high standards of healthcare we have in our community, therefore be it resolved that I Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim April 18th to the 24th, 2021, as Medical Laboratory Professionals Week in the City of Bloomington, and urge you to join in the city in commending all those who play a vital role in our healthcare delivery system. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, we do have some appointments that were approved in the last council meeting to announce.
Yes, that's correct. We have Cody Hendricks, who is now appointed to the Citizens Beautification Committee, Anthony Jones on the Human Relations Commission, and Teri Valentini on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Appreciate that. We now move to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have several people who emailed public comment. If I can read those names first. That was Laura Pritz, William Prado, Javelin Creel, Jessica Brooks, and those were provided to council earlier. I also received one public comment, but did not receive a response back to the two emails that I sent asking for a name. So just wanted to mention that. And the only person that we have live to speak tonight is Tyson Moore.
Tyson, can you hear us? Tyson, you're muted, dude.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead. You've got three minutes, man.
Hey, everyone. I'm speaking today at my capacity as a member of the Planning Commission, and this is regarding items Y and AA on the consent agenda. These are requests to rezone a currently undeveloped area in Ward 2 to facilitate a developer building a neighborhood of manufactured homes. I've spoken to Alderwoman Bowlin about this, and it's her word, and I understand that she's planning to prompt some discussion on the topic. And so I'm speaking here to provide some context on our deliberations at planning. As with all boards and commissions, typically we prefer the council approve our recommendations, trusting that we appropriately dug into the details and weighed all the relevant considerations. But in this situation, I do think it's appropriate for you to consider if there are some broader topics which should be brought to bear. In particular, a resident in one of the neighboring areas provided some compelling information about the nature of the financial arrangements that are planned in this neighborhood. In short, the homeowners will not own the land. They will just rent the land under their buildings, which creates some risk for them. This arrangement helps reduce the cost of the property and could make it more affordable for them. However, there's also a potential downside if something changes about the property. For example, the land rent costs, the land rent costs increases if the landowner is not responsive to their needs, if neighboring properties are not maintained, and so on. The solutions there are very limited. You can't move a manufactured home. It's prohibitively expensive. The market for used manufactured homes is not conducive to selling them. So the homeowner kind of becomes trapped in a bad situation with no way out. And you can kind of think of it like if you were living in a dingy apartment with a bad landlord, but the only way you can move out is if you found someone else to take over your apartment. You could be kind of stuck. So ultimately, the commission voted in favor of allowing this change, as this type of consideration seemed outside of the scope of what we were called to do. And I'm personally hesitant to have the city prevent two willing parties from entering into a financial agreement, even if one side might suffer from it. I also did not get any sense from the developer that they were approaching the project with the intention of taking advantage of anyone. But if it does raise some important questions about the types of housing we'd like to see constructed in the city, and if the council would like to take the opportunity to reflect on that topic of manufactured homes, and ultimately decide to reverse the decision in the Planning Commission, I wouldn't find that inappropriate, and I don't believe that commission would feel undermined at all. So if that's a consideration on your mind, just kind of put your mind rested. If I can be of any further assistance outside of the meeting, please don't hesitate to get in touch with me. City staff can give my contact information. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed for separate consideration? Councilmember Ward, did I see your hand? Molly?
Yes, you did. I'm trying to unmute myself. Can we please remove 8W?
8W as in weather, right?
As in Ward, yes.
As in Ward. Okay, thanks, Molly. Councilmember Crable, did you have something? You need to unmute yourself, Jeff.
Thanks, Mayor. 8D as in David.
8D as in David, okay. All right. Do we have any other, anything else to remove from the consent agenda? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, 8Y and 8AA.
Y and double A, Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, anything else? Councilmember Milawonbue? You need to unmute yourself, Mboka.
Yes, 8Z.
Pardon me? Z as in zoo?
Z, yes, Z as in zoo.
Okay. All right, well, that's quite a few. All right. At this point, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of item 8W as in Ward, 8D as in David, 8Y and double A, and 8Z? So those are a total of five differences. Moved by Councilmember Mathie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Several seconds. Councilmember Emig, I saw the first. At this point, I don't see any discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of the items that we mentioned?
Yes, Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take these in the items in which, excuse me, in the order in which they were polled. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Alderwoman Ward. There's item W. Molly, you've got the floor.
Yes, thanks. I would like to simply pull this item and ask that it be tabled until our next council meeting to be voted on at that time, after we've had a moment or two to think about other possibilities for how to spend the $83,000 or so that is indicated there. There's been some interest in my ward in particular about using that money in other ways, potentially with regard to accessibility issues. And I just would like to have a little bit of time to talk that through and see what the possibilities are, and then have us take it up and discuss it in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so is that a motion to table this to a time certain, and then that is the next council meeting, two weeks from tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember Cario. Excuse me. Second by Councilmember Correa. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward. See, that's an action. Thank you. Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries. There's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mathie.
Okay, thank you very much. So this, that will be tabled, just to make the record clear, to a time certain, which is two weeks from this evening. We're going to move on to item 8D, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Crable. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I really don't like doing this, and I tried to reach out to the mayor as soon as I saw this reappointment. But I am going to move to reject the reappointment of Serena Fish to the Public Safety and Community Relations Board.
Okay. Is there a second to that? So that's a motion to approve the appointments as presented, except for the appointment of Serena Fish to the PCRB, correct?
Well, I, that would be fine as well. I just basically made a motion to reject her appointment.
Okay, well, okay.
To be followed by a-
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. So, okay, it's to reject that particular appointment, and then we would, if that, whether it's approved or not, then we would move to consider the others. Okay. Is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember Correa. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, if I could start.
Please.
And I think everybody knows the situation. I hope they do. And I'll just kind of explain it and show my reasoning. There was an August 4 meeting of the PSCRB. The background of that is that the mayor had given the board a list of names to recommend a new member, and the board members were discussing their choices of who they would recommend. Ms. Fish spoke and said, quote, "The only reason I would, I don't know the person, but because this board has to continue to be a bridge between police community stakeholders, and we have to constantly, you know, be very transparent, and I won't say the name, Mr. Hasby, BLM, Black Lives Matter signs in his yard." So for that reason, I would say no at this time. Mr. Taylor, another board member, asked her to repeat that, and she added that this person, who is a black man, had a Black Lives Matter sign in his yard, which at this point, we're trying to stay as a bridge, so I don't want to put controversy in us trying to help. And so, you know, certainly she's entitled to opinion, but I think someone with that opinion shouldn't serve on a commission that is supposed to represent the community and its interactions with the police. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Bray.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'll just simply say that I think we all know this particular community member, Serena Fish, she comes to us frequently. We know her heart. We know the heart she has for community and the love that she has for others. She doesn't engage in hate speech, and she does act as a bridge. So I would say that, that this, I guess, this method of operating by Councilmember Crable, I reject the notion that he wasn't able to reach you, Mayor. I find that very strange and very different than is our usual, you know, is our experience with you, Mayor. So in this regard, we have a valuable member of our community who has served, who wants to continue to serve, who could bring institutional knowledge and continued, and you continue in this role in a manner that has been exemplary in service. And I find this kind of, I find this somewhat disingenuous, because we have a community member whose agenda doesn't align with Councilmember Crable's. So I will be supporting this. I'll be voting no to this motion. Thank you.
Just to clarify, because there may be some miscommunication. Jeff, Councilmember Crable did contact me a couple of weeks ago and asked me about the timetable of this and what had happened, and I did dig into this. I did communicate with Amy Overton, and I apparently did give the okay without specifically mentioning or going through the details of who was being appointed at that point, because I didn't realize what the circumstances were. So, and then Councilmember Crable did reach out to me today. So I think there was, there were just some communications issues on that. This is irrespective of the substance of it, but I just want to clarify that portion.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Thank you. You are very responsive, and I, this, this grandstanding at this late date, I find objectionable and very harmful to community.
Okay. Councilmember Mathie?
So I just want to clarify, did she say anything disparaging about the individual or anything disparaging about Black Lives Matter? Or did she just simply want to thought that the PCSRB needed to stay a neutral party?
Jeff, do you know the story there? Go ahead.
Sure. You know, I don't know beyond what, you know, what she said, but I would interpret it as her not believing that somebody, you know, that supports Black Lives Matter is somebody that's appropriate to be on the board.
Okay. Does that clarify?
Okay, so this is just your interpretation?
Right, from listening to that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. At this point, we're going to go ahead and call the question. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? And again, this is the motion to not approve Serena Fish, okay?
Councilmember Mathie.
No.
Councilmember Bowlin.
No.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
No.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Julie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
No.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
No.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
No.
There are several nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Would you please?
Yes, Councilmember Mathie, Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Milawonbue, Councilmember Painter, Councilmember Ward, and Councilmember Bray.
Okay, the motion fails six to three. Is there, at this point, I would accept a contrary motion, not contrary, but another motion, excuse me.
I'll make the motion to accept as presented.
And then, are you referring then to Donna? Just to clarify for the record, I think I know what you mean, all of the appointments that are mentioned there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that one, too.
Second by Councilmember Bray. At this point, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? And this is to approve all of the appointments, not just Serena Fish.
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
No.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries. We move next to Councilmember Bowlin, who had asked us to pull items 8Y. I'm sorry.
Mayor, just for the record, if I could just read that there was one nay to announce, and that was-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine, Councilmember Correa. Thanks.
I'm sorry. I didn't ask for the nays to be announced. There was one nay, Councilmember Correa. Thank you. At this point, we move to Councilmember Bowlin, whom I'm going to turn the floor over to in just a second. She is pulling item 8Y and 8AA related to the development that we'd heard in public comment. Donna, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to table this or postpone it to the next regular meeting. I still have some, well, I've gotten a lot of different feedback from various people, and I still am conflicted with making a final decision. And I would like to draw on the collective wisdom of the council and have a more extensive conversation, and I don't, I don't want to waste the time now-
Sure.
-since it's on the consent agenda, so.
Sure, so I understand that. So-
I'd like to make a motion to postpone till the next meeting.
To, again, to a time certain, two weeks from this evening. And there's a second by Councilmember Bray. Any discussion on that motion? Seena, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
And just to clarify, we are tabling 8-
I know.
8Y and 8A. Gotcha.
Right, 8Y and 8A. Excuse me.
Double A.
8AA, right.
Yes, got it. Okay. Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue. Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move to item 8Z as in zoo, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Milawonbue. Mboka?
Okay, sorry. So as I stated previously, you know, residents in the area expressed concern about the proposed zoning of rezoning to R3A, but they were open to R2 zoning. And when we tabled this item previously, it was with the hope that a solution could be worked out, and we would see a modified proposal. But given the fact that the proposal that came back to us as is, I would move that the application for the zoning amendment be denied.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Bray. Discussion, any comments? We have a motion in a sense to deny this. Councilmember Crable. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would vote in favor of this, and the reason I would, I've listened to both, both public hearings in front of the Planning Commission. You know, I think the developer has done all that he could with two public meetings to try to answer the questions of the residents. And also, you know, this has been a B1 for 20 years, and the current developer has just been unsuccessful in trying to bring in any type of business development. They've also said their plan is to, is to build townhomes. You know, so that is what their plan is. There will, I know people have talked about the lack of a park. I know they're building a park in that area. And, and so I know we've done similar zoning changes. There was a zoning change we did at Harvest Point and also at The Grove. There's been no evidence that this would decrease property values, and actually, traffic would be less in a residential development, even in an apartment complex, than what, you know, than, than any business type of development that's allowed in B1. This is just zoning. The developer will have to come back to the Planning Commission for final approval for layout design density. I also want to note that, you know, this is a minority-owned business, this developer. He owns other businesses in the community. He served as past president of the McLean County India Association, and serves on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and it will increase property tax revenue. So for that reason, I would be in favor of this development.
Okay. Anything else as a comment before we vote? Councilmember Bray.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to say that we spent quite a bit of time and effort in our rezoning project and resources of the city to zone and have a vision for what our city should be. And we just completed that. And now we have a developer who is seeking to have a deviation from that. We've asked for community conversation. That has not occurred to the satisfaction of the sitting alderman in regards to his constituents that are directly affected by this change. And, you know, folks rely on that zoning when they make one of the biggest investment decisions that they make in their lives, which is purchase of a home. And so the idea that we have a developer that's not following the zoning, and in addition to that, has not followed through with the community conversations that were requested, and then finally is seeking a zoning which does not align with what he says he's going to build. If in fact, he's going to build townhouses, that is the zoning he should seek. The zoning he's seeking here, R three, is apartment building. And so therefore, that does, is not even a match to what he purports to wish to build. So for all these reasons, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, um, these are the, these are definitely kinds of, that we see and obviously also in Ward two. Uh, and sometimes, as we, those of us have been on the, the council for a while, certainly know that sometimes there are legitimate concerns, sometimes there are concerns that may be overstated. The thing that we don't want to do is to, I would say, urge the council, generally speaking, to overreact to things if it's because, uh, people who don't fit a particular economic class might move within their particular realm. That seems something that we don't want to do. It's really inconsistent with the Fair Housing Act of 1968. But at this point, that's the only comment that I'll make for the record. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? This is a motion, uh, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Correa?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you really nailed it. Um, that's, that's exactly what I was going to raise, so I won't spend more time on it. I just would like, uh, Councilmember Milawonbue to restate his, his motion so that, uh, the motion is to reject, right? Or to deny the application. So voting yes is an agreement for that.
Yes, as I understand, yes would be to deny. Is that correct, Mboka? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Cause we, one of the things that we do want to do irrespective of this issue or the issue in Ward two, but is clearly we, we, uh, have gotten, uh, national recognition for our progress and affordability of our housing and affordability of our housing, but that doesn't mean that we don't need more affordable housing in our community for people who have not, who do not have the ability to pay. Um, so regardless of that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Oh, wait, I still have two hands up? Oh, I'm sorry.
Three hands.
Uh, three hands. Councilmember Emig, I see yours, and, uh, uh, Councilmember Painter, and then we will go back to, uh, Council, oh, no, excuse me, this is a different word. Um, okay. In this order, start with you, Julie, and then we'll go to Johnny and Donna.
All right, I, I'll, I'll be quick. I just want to point out that the, um, Planning Commission has heard this now a couple of times, and, um, by and large, they think that the rezoning does make good sense for the city, and the findings of fact stand. And, um, the concerns that were raised, um, were discussed considerably, and it was determined that it, the rezoning that is being proposed is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next then, Councilmember Painter and then Bowlin.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that the people that live in that area are livid about this. And at no point in time was it ever stated that this is going to be affordable housing. It's going to be expensive apartments. So, um, I just don't buy into the argument that, uh, people are saying that we need to have more affordable housing here because it's not going to be affordable. Anyway, that's it.
And ju- just to clarify, uh, older woman painter, I, I was, I was trying to make that at a 500 foot point, not necessarily for this specific, particular project. I haven't done a deep dive into this, but very often, my experience has been, again, I don't know the details of this in terms of, I haven't spoken to people on the ground at length. Sometimes that is the reaction, and we've certainly had that, not just in many of our wards, where people, uh, may react to something. But, uh, you're probably right. It's hard to imagine that something would be, uh, inexpensive affordable housing perhaps at that location. Councilmember Bowlin?
Uh, yes, I would like to take issue with the fact that I am rejecting or questioning, um, a manufactured home park in War Two, because I have, I'm somehow against people that would be living in a manufactured home park. Um,
Did, did, did something I said suggest that?
So, yeah, something you said suggested that. Um,
Well, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, Councilmember Bowlin, that was absolutely not my intention. I was talking about, I was talking about the broader issue, and I was saying that these are two examples of things where there may be some opposition, uh, that are based on things. We've seen those in the past. That was not my intention. But, so.
Thank you for saying that. This is, but this is, this issue that I'm concerned with is not a not my backyard issue. Okay?
Okay.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, obviously. I just, I was muted, sorry. Uh, I, we all take each other to our words, and I appreciate that. Uh, and I apologize. That was not my intention. I was talking about the broader issue, and we deal with these things all the time. In fact, when I go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the, and Mboka is going to be, uh, you know, privy to all this quite shortly. There are constantly issues of developments that sometimes people don't always understand the nature of it because there may be a visceral reaction. Again, I'm not saying that that's the case here, but those are at least things for us to keep in mind as we're making these kinds of decisions. And obviously, you did not say that you opposed it, uh, just for the record, to make it clear, uh, Councilmember Bowlin, uh, it was a, a motion to defer to the next council meeting. Again, uh, that was not my intention, and I apologize any misinterpretation of that. But there is this broader issue, uh, that sometimes does appear, you know, in our community and many others. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and call the, the, the roll, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And so just to clarify, a yes is to deny.
A yes is to deny.
Councilmember Mathie?
No.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig?
No.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
No.
Councilmember Ward?
No.
Councilmember Crable?
No.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the motion, uh, is defeated. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you announce the five nays, please?
Councilmember Mathie? Councilmember Emig? Councilmember Correa? Councilmember Ward? And Councilmember Crable?
Okay, at this point, though, then we are in the quandary where we, uh, have defeated something. Uh, do we have a positive motion moved by Councilmember Mathie and second by, uh, Councilmember Correa? Um, I, I think we, oh, do we have discussion on this, Councilmember Bray?
Yes, Mayor. So I'd like to understand, um, what it means that someone has, I guess, received, is going to receive approval for overzoning their project. So for instance, there, it's my understanding that people are going to vote yes because they believe that there's only going to be a townhouse, uh, as presented, a townhouse development when the actual request for the zoning is overzoning. It's R three, which is apartments. So I'd like for Jeff Durgans to inform us, what does that mean to us as a, a community in understanding how you connect the dots now going forward?
Again, we'll turn it over to Jeff. As I understand it, though, we, we would still have to, to approve this as, when, once it's presented, correct, Mr. Durgans, or please correct me?
Yeah, so, so once you zone something, uh, the zoning, any, any use within that zoning district is allowed. Um, and I, I know that apartments are allowed in R three. I, I'm not sure if townhomes are allowed. That's something I think Melissa's here, she could talk to probably better than I could as to all of the different uses. But once you zone something, then any use within that zoning district is permissible.
So that would include apartments?
If that's, yeah, if that's in R three, then that would be a permissible use.
I see. Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, Milawonbue? Uh, Mboka, you need to unmute yourself. Mboka?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, can you hear me?
Wait, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so this is a, a question for Jeff as well. So what do we make then of the developer's, um, I guess I would say assertion that he would only build townhomes?
Jeff?
Are we, can we, can we hold them accountable for that?
Uh, no. I mean, what, so once, once the zoning is granted, any use within there is, is permissible, um, unless they're seeking a special use or something like that. Um, I, I do think there are, you know, they, you talked about plans that will eventually be submitted, um, and different things like that. Um, but as far as, as far as the uses within a zoning district, the, any use is permissible.
Do we have, do we have any, Jeff, do we have any reason to believe that, that, uh, in spite of the fact that this person, that, that the developer is asking to build townhouses, that there's an apartment project?
That's, that's probably a better question for Melissa. I, I'm not aware of.
Okay. Well, she's, okay.
Yep.
Um, yeah, Councilmember Crable, and then we'll go ahead and vote. I think that's the last hand I have.
Uh, is Melissa, uh, on the line, available to answer questions?
Is Melissa on? Okay.
Yeah, I am.
Melissa? Do we have any, I think if you could answer that, I guess the general question, do we have any reason to believe that there, uh, I mean, the, the developer is presenting to us a, a townhouse project, and that's the reason why there's a, a, a request for rezoning? Do we have any reason to believe that there would be apartments?
Uh, not to my knowledge. To my knowledge, um, he is stating that he is, plans to build a single family attached housing.
Okay.
And, and, and Mayor, if I could ask a question of Melissa?
Go ahead. She's online.
Uh, yeah, Melissa, um, if you could answer, what is the benefit then to, um, uh, obtaining an R three A zoning versus an R two in, in this situation? Doesn't it have to do with, um, buffer? I'm not saying the right word, right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I mean, I'm not really, no, I'm not really sure what you're asking in regards to the buffer.
Well, it's a buffer between the residential and the commercial.
Oh, that it can be, yeah, it can be kind of a step down from the commercial to the residential. Yes.
And, and also a benefit, I guess, under, under the R three A is the townhomes do not have to, uh, be pre-approved?
They are allowed by right, correct?
By right, that's what I meant. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At this point, we're going to go ahead and call the roll, and this is a motion, yes is to approve this project, uh, Matt, or excuse me, this, not the project, the rezoning. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
No.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
No.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember?
No.
Their motion carries six to three. There are three nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Milawonbue, Councilmember Painter, and Councilmember Bray.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, then we move to our regular agenda, and the first item on our regular agenda is consideration and action on the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget and appropriation ordinance as requested by the Finance Department. And we start with a presentation, and then we have a council discussion and motion or motions. After that, we're going to start with, uh, Scott Rathman. I'm going to start though, turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Gleason, who will introduce the, the, uh, discussion and provide some, uh, initial remarks. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, and the community. Uh, this FY22 budget is one that we're extremely proud of. Uh, some of the high notes that I want to hit before, uh, Scott Rathman, uh, has his final presentation regarding FY22, uh, comes next. But a couple of things that I wanted to share, uh, is that we started this public process sooner. Uh, obviously, Scott and I start the budget process honestly, uh, you know, the very week, uh, that it goes into effect. So that first week of May, we're already talking about FY23, uh, that's upcoming. But the, uh, public conversation occurred a little bit sooner. Uh, we also provided videos. Uh, we had the, uh, Budget 101 series that Scott and Chris Tomerland, the, uh, Budget Manager, provided, and then videos that provided updates, uh, you know, that coincided with the different steps that were presented to, uh, council at the, uh, council meetings as well. Uh, something else that I wanted to share is while we're up, uh, about $60 million in capital projects, the operating budget, uh, is actually down a little bit more than 1%. And what that means is, uh, the true operating cost for the organization itself, uh, staff, uh, you know, different things like that, we're actually down, uh, to $109 million of that 260 million, I'm sorry, $250 million, uh, budget. That's before council tonight. So we, we find a way to live within our means, I guess is what I'm sharing. Uh, so government is not getting bigger. Uh, the $60 million increase is for capital projects. A lot of that is, uh, infrastructure, uh, things for economic development. Uh, and it's something, uh, that I think this council has put a lot of work into. I know staff has, and excited to, uh, bring that before council, uh, hearing in a little bit. But then also, you'll notice that a nine B item, uh, that is for older woman Emig in her, uh, uh, full-time capacity, uh, at the McLean County, uh, Museum of History. Uh, she holds, uh, the executive director position there. Well, we donate $45,000. We contribute rather $45,000 to, uh, fund, uh, portions of that operation. So rather than ask older woman Emig to abstain from the entire FY22 budget, uh, we've, uh, put this in a way that nine A will adopt everything except for that $45,000 line item. That will be the next item that comes before council. Then we'll ask older woman, uh, Emig to abstain. But definitely wanted her to be a part of this. Uh, it's very important and, uh, very exciting, I think. Uh, Scott, uh, I'm going to turn this over, uh, for your last presentation on FY22. Take it away, and nice job.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'm, I'm going to try not to repeat too much, uh, what the city manager just said, but some of it does, uh, bear repeating, but I'm pleased to present the FY22 budget tonight for adoption. Um, this is a culmination of six months or more of efforts by staff, council, community, you know, countless hours of, of work, research, discussion, review has gone into this. Um, I'm, I'm proud of our staff, proud of everyone that's had input into this. A lot of challenges, uh, presented themselves to us, um, the least of which is not COVID. You know, uh, everything being done virtually, and the revenue, uh, challenges that we had, we've rebounded nicely, uh, during the year, but we still thought it, uh, was, uh, a good thing to be cautious going into this budget. Uh, as Tim mentioned, it's, it's, it's a record-setting budget of 252 million, but it doesn't represent a growth in, uh, government. Uh, the $61 million of that is for infrastructure. A significant portion of that is being paid from accumulated reserves. So reserves have been accumulated uh, over the prior years so that we can execute these projects in an efficient manner. Um, you know, an example being, um, you don't want to, uh, repair a water line and then, or, or do a road and then repair a water line and have to redo the road. So a lot of planning goes into this, uh, these, the execution of these projects. Um, you know, we have, uh, been donating $45,000 to the museum. Um, as the city manager mentioned, we are administratively going to approve the budget in two pieces tonight. The presentation is going to be for the total budget. Um, we intend to publish the bu, the budget in total. Um, so at the end of the presentation, I will net out the $45,000, uh, for, uh, the approval for this, uh, phase of the budget. So, next slide, Phil. To start off, we have to, uh, explain the differences between the proposed budget, which was 200, 250.3 million, and what we're adopting, uh, this evening in total. So the total budget has gone up approximately $1.4 million between the proposed and this final adoption being presented, and that is attributable to the O'Neal Park, uh, and pool plan that was approved on March 22nd, uh, for 11.7 million net of the contingency that was around 100,000, 11.8 and the financial impact of that memo. So, uh, we had $10.3 million in the proposed budget. We've increased that to 11.7. So we've had a net increase to the overall budget between proposed and adopted of 1.4 million. Next slide, please. Just recapping the totals, uh, th- this will be the total combined budget after we adopt the two items for the evening. Nearly $252 million for the citywide increase of 21.4 million. Uh, but if you skip down to the capital projects line, you can see there's an increase of 20.4 million over the prior year, accounting for most of that increase. The general fund, 109.1 million, as the city manager indicated in the introduction. Uh, this is actually a de- decrease over prior years of 1.2 million or 1.1%. And then the last line, you can see that we're, we're still, um, moving forward with the effort to, uh, wean ourselves off the, the capital, uh, equipment lease, and we have $600,000 targeted for cash for equipment in the general fund. Next slide, please. Uh, as I indicated a few moments ago, we, we did determine it was, it was best to enter 2022 with caution related to residual impacts from COVID. Uh, we took the major tax revenue category, uh, categories down by nearly 3.6 million, 21 to 22. Most of the revenues have, are starting to rebound nicely, um, as vaccines are rolled out and the economy's starting to gain steam, although we are having some lingering concerns related to that local motor fuel tax line that we'll have to keep an eye on, uh, as we assume for primary related to a remote, remote workforce. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. General fund revenues, um, just to highlight here, the, the tax line that I just referred to, the three point eight million dollar decrease over prior year does not match, uh, exactly to the prior exhibit um, related to other taxes that we include in this, but overall, just a one point two million dollar decrease uh, in the overall general fund revenues, and we've had to bump up our use of fund balance for restricted pension reserves to two point eight million. Uh, most of that due to, uh, underlying assumption changes for the public safety pensions, the mortality rate tables, and some tier-two, uh, benefit increases related to the state consolidation plan. Next slide, please. Uh, general fund bud- uh, budget rep expenses, uh, just a modest, uh, increases in some, uh, categories. Decrease is another overall decrease of one point one million dollars year-over-year. You can see the, the line item, other intergovernmental expense. Uh, that's where we're reflecting the increase in the public safety pensions. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the general fund, um, budget by, uh, department category. Administration is legal, finance, HR, et cetera. Uh, most of the other categories are self-explanatory. The layout of this exhibit, uh, shows the comparisons year-over-year. Again, public safety, uh, an increase related to the pension increases and the assumption changes. All, all the way down, you can see that the, the grand total is still a net decrease, and then I also wanted to highlight, which we went over, um, during the proposed budget, is that we have, um, offsets to some of these categories. We, we describe the budgets in totals, either total revenues or total expenses, but when you look at a net, um, uh, budget for a department, and I'm going to, uh, pick, pick on parks here, uh, highlight parks, I should say, they have a total overall budget of eleven point seven million dollars, uh, targeted for FY twenty-two, but if you look to the far right, uh, the net targeted expense budget for parks is really six point six million, um, which, you know, indicates that they have five point one to five point two million dollars in offsetting revenues that come in, uh, for the parks departments. Um, you know, a significant component of that, like the highlight, is, uh, um, Bloomington Ice, uh, one of our programs that actually, uh, sometimes makes money or breaks even. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just a graphical, uh, depiction of the departments of the previous, uh, slide. Next slide, please. Moving on to the citywide budget, um, same exhibit, uh, from prior, from the proposed, other than the increase related to O'Neill Pool, but to highlight the use of fund balance for twenty twenty-two, you can see it's thirty-four point six million. Um, of that, roughly three million of that is related to, uh, the general fund and the pensions. Um, so really, we have about thirty-one million dollars of fund balance of reserves being utilized for those infrastructure projects we've been discussing. So again, accumulated reserves going against those infrastructure projects. On the miscellaneous revenue line, uh, that's where we have a placeholder related to borrowing for O'Neill Pool. We've took, taken that up from ten point three to eleven point seven. Um, so you can see that our total revenue increased to twenty-one point four million year-over-year. Next slide, please. Uh, on citywide total, uh, expenses, I'm looking halfway down the exhibit, the capital expenditure line, uh, increase of twenty-two point eight million, we reflected the increase in O'Neill Pool. If you look all the way down to the bottom for the total increase year-over-year, you can see the total increase is twenty-one point four million. Yet we have a twenty-two point eight million dollar increase in capital expenditures, so you can see again that our, our infrastructure, uh, spending and, uh, a significant portion of it being funded from accumulated reserves is accounted for most of the increase related to the citywide budget. Next slide, please. This exhibit just shows all of the funds, well, the fund, uh, not all the funds, because some of them we've grouped together, um, year-over-year. The general fund, the one-ten for twenty twenty-one, one-oh-nine for twenty twenty-two, the decrease we've discussed of one point, almost two million dollars. Uh, most of the increases related to the other funds, you can see in the far right column, are related to, uh, capital projects, um, motor fuel tax, this is the state motor fuel tax fund, uh, the capital funds where we're, we're targeting in O'Neill Pool, that's gone up by one point four million over, uh, proposed. Um, the only fund that's gone up essentially, uh, not due to projects, uh, material in any way, is the insurance and internal service funds, and that's really related to health premiums. Uh, but the comment I wanted to make about that is, uh, those expenses are actually allocated then to, uh, all the departments. So in effect, that's built into the, the general fund and the citywide, um, budgets, uh, departmental budgets, and, you know, those have been held, holding pretty steady, so we, we've basically controlled our costs in other categories to offset these increases in our health insurance. Next slide, please. Uh, this again is just a graphical depiction of the, um, the citywide budget by fund. And next slide, please. Uh, this is the capital projects, uh, detailed by fund. I wanted to highlight, uh, a little bit more information down at the bottom. We're trying to direct, uh, the community to where resources can be found related to all this information, and we want to highlight that in, in our budget books, in the second budget book, the other funds and capital improvement, there is a tremendous amount of detail related to the capital projects. There's, there's summaries that just indicate the, the titles of the projects, and, uh, and then there's detailed sheets, and I went over these, uh, during the proposed budget, where there's pictures, indication of if, if it's a multi-year project, et cetera, uh, just a wealth of information to really see uh, what's, what kind of services are going to be provided to the city in the coming year. Next slide, please. This is where we need to break down the total budget into, to our two components for the evening. So, um, as the city manager mentioned, um, you know, we, we have, uh, supported the McLean County Museum, uh, with a tune of about forty-five thousand dollars. So we're going to back that out of this, uh, the main adoption for this agenda item. Um, so that is paid out of the general fund, so that's why you're seeing this shown in two places, because we typically highlight the citywide and the general fund, so it's not two times forty-five thousand, it's just, you know, the general fund is part of citywide. So the citywide budget of two fifty-one million, seven thirty-five, six ninety, less than forty-five thousand, leaves a net adoption for the evening of two fifty-one, six ninety-six, six ninety. And then, uh, the same effect on the general fund, the one-oh-nine, oh-sixty-six, seven-oh-one, less forty-five thousand, is a net adoption of one-oh-nine, oh-twenty-one, seven-oh-one. Next slide, please. This is a very busy slide, but I wanted to include it in the documentation just as a resource for the community. This lists all of our twenty-nine funds. Uh, the, the grade column is total budget for each fund. You can see, uh, the grand total at the bottom is the same number. I, I just highlighted the two fifty-one, six ninety, six ninety, and this, this fund also, or this exhibit also shows our reserve balances and our projected reserve balances, uh, for the end of twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. Our resources. Again, um, we have a budget in brief that we issued every year. This, this will not come out until after May first. We have to wait till, um, the property tax rates are finalized by the county, and that's when the target timeframe is. So we'll, we'll have that out, uh, available soon after May first, and then the budget books, um, our target date is, uh, to have those available online by May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And we've given some examples here of some of the information, the pertinent information in the two books, uh, so that the community can know where to look for, for things that are, are of interest to them. And then as, at the bottom as well, are, um, is the link to the budget videos, uh, that hopefully highlight some of the background uh, and the details that we put into the budget. Next slide, please. So I guess I'd like to, you know, just take this moment, I want to thank, uh, council, staff, the community, uh, for all the countless hours that have gone into, you know, discussing this, reviewing the budget, uh, putting it together. Uh, so at this point in time, I'd, I'd like to recommend, um, that we adopt this portion of FY twenty-two budget in the amount of two fifty, two hundred and fifty-one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. So any questions or comments? Thank you, Phil.
Okay, at this point, is there a, we will begin questions and comments, we can start out, is there a motion? Councilmember Mila Longway?
Yeah.
Maboka?
Sure, I, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Okay, and then, uh, second by Councilmember Bowlin, and now we, of course, uh, can, can move to our, uh, uh, questions and discussion session. So we'd have a motion by Councilmember Mila Longway, second by Councilmember Bowlin. Comments, questions, concerns? I see, uh, Maboka, I'm going to start with you, and then, uh, Councilmember Crable and Bray.
Sorry, I had my hand up from before, because I was.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Councilmember Crable and then Bray.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, Scott, if we have any idea at this point how much, uh, sales tax revenue we're receiving from the new, uh, uh, cannabis dispensary in town?
Yes, I'm good, since we, uh, uh, I have to kind of like do a little prelude to this, because it's, it's one dispensary, and by, uh, indicating the sales tax revenues, we could be, um, indicating that the, yeah, the amount of money there.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me ask it differently, just, uh, is the sales tax revenue reflected in, in what you're showing us on a monthly basis yet?
No, uh, well, on the month, for the budget, we included, we're, we're getting a, a tax component, uh, for the cannabis, and we've included about fifty thousand dollars in the FY twenty-two budget. We have not included any of the dispensary sales tax revenues in the twenty twenty-two budget. When we were entering, um, going into proposed, we had no indication at all what the dollar amounts were. We just got visibility on those basically last week. Um, so we, we, we thought it prudent just to leave those on.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Um, a- and I wanted to then point out, um, you know, I, I thought there was, um, you know, a lot more public engagement, at least attempts of public engagement. Um, you know, I was disappointed kind of at the end when there was no one that made public comment when it, when we had the public hearing. And I, and, and I want to see if maybe we can have a, a discussion about, do, do we try to have something about the budget and bring the public in? Um, you know, about the same time that we start talking about the departmental budget, so that, you know, we don't end up in a situation where, you know, we feel like the budget's already kind of baked in, and it's going to be hard to change things. So I just wanted to, you wanted to throw that out there. And then, um, the final thing, I wanted to, um, amend the motion that Maboka made. Um, I want to re, my motion would be to reduce the twenty twenty-two proposed police administrative, administration budget from, and I'm going to skip this, the dollar amount here, twenty-one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents to the twenty twenty-one projected spend number of twenty million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-four cents. And I'll explain that if I get a second.
Uh, just, okay, first, we'll, we'll see if you get a second, and then we'll, uh, I, I need to talk to, uh, uh, Mr. Jergens about the logistics here. Uh, there's a second by Councilmember Correo. Um, let, uh, Mr. Jergens, at this point, we've got a counter motion, so we need to vote on that first, is that correct?
Well, yeah, so Councilmember Crable's made a motion to amend the motion on the table. So, um, you can, yes, you can now, he can explain it, but yes, you vote on that motion. If it passes, that becomes the motion on the table.
Okay.
Approval of the budget with that new number for the police funding.
So we, we need to, we need to make any, have any debate and comments and vote on that motion before we continue?
The amendment motion, correct.
Uh, excuse me, no, we, we've got an amended motion. Don't we, don't we need to deal with that first?
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, at this point, uh, any comments on the amended motion before I ask for a, a, a roll call, uh, let's see, uh, Councilmember Bray and then Crable. Again, this is, uh, I've, I've got you in the queue on the other motion, uh, but at this point, we want to see if the motion gets amended. Councilmember Bray.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I will not be supporting this amended, uh, motion. Uh, it goes back to my comments. I was going to say initially, um, that I, I'm very supportive of this budget. It shows the collective work, not only of, uh, of our finance department, but of the community. Uh, we have, uh, regular discussions about the, the budget for those who, uh, attend, uh, both our council sessions as well as our three-in-one meetings, and, uh, I just, I find that, um, you know, very informative and, and also giving us opportunities to shape the budget. So I reject the notion that we haven't, nor has the community had opportunity to weigh in. And then, when I look at this concept of focusing in on reducing the police budget, I, I look back to, I believe it was our third quarter, um, our community had a panel discussion, which included, um, leaders of, of our community, uh, talking with our police chief, both of, uh, Normal and Bloomington and others. Um, we had the NAACP represented there, we had Black Lives Matter represented there, we had social services folks representative. That, that discussion was moderated, uh, by a, a very, um, respected, uh, member, uh, of the administration at ISU. And, uh, I attended that, uh, as did other council members, both virtually and personally. And I, the conclusion of that community discussion was that there was a good partnership between our community groups and the police, and that happily, that the very sad situation in some other states and some other communities is not here in Bloomington. And finally, out my last comment, it goes like this. In fact, what we heard in that community conversation, for those who participated and were listening, um, was that, uh, that these groups that go in and, and are, come to, uh, various calls, um, you, you know, within the community, they, they need the assistance and the security that the police officers are providing, and they found that their, off, their assistance appropriate and helpful. And so, um, for that reason, I, I would not support this amended motion. Thank you.
Just to, just also to, to clarify, uh, just in, in terms of the general budget conversation, I think Councilmember Crable is correct, and that is, it, it, it would be nice to get more people involved earlier, because sometimes people don't realize. I mean, we do on the council, but people often, the community, don't realize that a lot of these decisions really need to begin to dis, be discussed in, uh, late summer and fall, uh, rather than at the last moment. Uh, but especially if we're thinking about, as we do have, we have, uh, uh, you know, resource counselors, we've got, uh, uh, that's money in the budget for at-risk youth summer job program, many things that are, that are helpful. But we have been all har, or not harmed, but hindered, I suspect, in discussing this because of COVID this year, and that's not a typical, this is, you know, not, obviously not a typical year, it's, it's unprecedented in many ways, but that is certainly something that in the future, uh, the mayor-elect and the new council members, uh, certainly and our city manager, I know, will be, uh, all keeping these things in mind. Before I move on, uh, do the people who have their hands up, are you interested in speaking on this amended amendment to the motion before I call that question? Uh, Council, uh, okay, Councilmember Crable has spoken already, I'll come back to you, Jeff. So, uh, Councilmember, uh, Bowlin, did you want to speak to the amendment?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, one of, one of the things about, um, going back to last year's budget, uh, we were, well, we're understaffed for the police, first of all, and I believe just recently, three or four officers, um, have applied and have gone through the training. So, we're going to have to cover those expenses, and we're also going to have to, um, cover expend, expenses from the mandates coming out of Springfield, which we have no idea what that's going to cost us. So I don't think it's, uh, a wise choice to just assume that we can afford to put out what we spent last year. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mila Longway and then Painter.
Sure, I, I won't support this amendment either, uh, because I, I do believe that the, the staff has taken quite a bit of time uh, to put this together. Uh, they, they, they put together a, a very thoughtful process, uh, where many of us, uh, had an opportunity, uh, to, to weigh in. Uh, I, I understand that, uh, um, sure, you know, with, with COVID, there was some, some challenges as far as, uh, resident involvement, but I, I do think that, you know, many of the, all of them had an opportunity to, uh, to provide feedback, uh, throughout the process. And, and plus, I, I think, you know, as the staff, uh, put this together, uh, they were, uh, they, they took into consideration many things, including, uh, the expenses that the, uh, the, the police department would have to incur. So I, I, I don't think, uh, it is appropriate, particularly this late in the game, uh, to, to come up with these kinds of, uh, these kinds of amendments. And, and I, and I want to say, I do, I do feel like, you know, the, the police department does a, does a great job, and it would not be a, uh, a good thing for us to do at this particular time.
Okay, I, I just, just to, to note, uh, we are almost out of our budgeted time, and we are only dealing with the amendment, and I've got four hands up now.
I'll call the question.
Okay, uh, all right, if there's no objection to calling the question, let's go ahead and call the question and then.
Uh, Mayor, I would object.
You would object? Okay.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to explain, I guess, the basis of my motion yet. Um, but, um,
Okay, well, I, I.
Can I move to extend time?
Uh, you can, uh, at this point, yes, uh, because at this point, we're, we're almost out of our entire time, and we're only focusing on this one amendment right now, and I would just. And I would just urge us to, to, to be surgical. I think every, I know we want to say things for the record, but I think everybody probably knows, oh, they're probably going to be voting on this anyway. But for the record, Councilmember Crable, are you recommending a specific time? How about we extend time to, how about 10 minutes on this point? And then we're going to need to extend our comments if we have debate on the actual final passage of the budget. Is that, is that okay with, we're starting just 10 minutes?
Yeah, so moved, Mayor.
Okay, is there a second to Councilmember Crable's motion, a second by Councilmember Matthew? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll to extend this? So we'll go from 7:11 to 7:21.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
No.
Councilmember Milawonway?
No.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
No.
There are three noes to announce, Madam Clerk, although the motion does carry.
Councilmember Boland, Councilmember Milawonway, and Councilmember Bray.
Okay, well, we have 10 minutes on this piece, and I'm going to start with, well, in the order that I see them here. Councilmember Ward, Emig, Boland, and Painter. And again, just recognizing, we are only talking about this one amendment.
Mayor.
Not the entire budget.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Could I have a chance to just explain my motion?
Oh, you, you don't have your, you don't have your hand up, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Councilmember Ward, Emig, Boland, Painter, and Crable. And then at this point, we're down to less than two minutes apiece. So Councilmember Ward.
I'd like to defer and ask Councilmember Crable to explain the motion first. And then, then I would like to claim my time back at the end.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ward, we don't, that's not part of our, those aren't part of our rules. Actually, in the United States Congress and other things, they do allow that, but we don't, we don't have that as our provision. So your, your time is your
So my, my question is this, I have a question. Can I get an explanation of where Councilmember Crable is expecting to put the money that would be saved by this cut?
Okay, I think that's a fair question, and I'm going to use the chair's prerogative to, to, Jeff, you have about a minute or so to clarify that.
Sure. So just noting, you know, the amount I'm proposing is 95% of the actual budget. And I think this amendment will allow us to have serious review discussion of the police budget that a majority of council wanted to have as soon as possible after the 2022 budget was passed. So at that point, I think amendments to the police budget can then be made warranted after that review. And so basically, this money would go back into the general fund until, you know, such time as it's determined that additional money should go into the budget after we have that, that review and discussion.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Ward?
It does.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Emig, I'm just going in the order in which you mentioned.
Yes, thank you for that, that added comment, Alderman Crable. I think that what's most important here, at least to me, is, is that going forward, we commit to having conversations about our priorities and funding. And, and just as importantly, if, if we decide down the road that data warrants moving money from the police budget, that, that it makes sense that we're investing it in another way that complements whatever it is that we need to get done. But I don't see why we can't amend in the future. Therefore, I will not support this tonight because I don't, I don't think it's necessary to change the current status of the budget to still get to the more important and broader picture.
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify on that, it's, as a procedural motion, note, we make budget amendments all the time. We may not make them at every single meeting, but we obviously make them at all times. The budget is a blueprint that, that can be altered. Councilmember Painter and then Boland.
Yeah, thank you. You've had the better part of a year to address this situation. And you have two big budget books that line by line, it shows what the money is doing and where it's going. It has a nice little narrative, if you don't want to read line by line budgets, that goes along with all of it. The police would talk to you anytime you wanted to, but you haven't done that. And to make this motion at the last minute, quite frankly, I think is one of the most outstanding displays of laziness and
Point of order.
Yeah, what's your point of order, Councilmember Carrillo?
Is this a lecture or are we going to get to the point?
Okay.
I think I made my point. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember
Point of order, point of order.
Yes.
Well, I don't find these tactics of Council Carrillo positive. We have a council member who would like to state her, her point.
Right.
She's been cut off by
Point of order.
Okay, we're going to stop, we're going to stop with the point of orders. Nobody, nobody has recognition, nobody's got the floor, so there's no point of order. Councilmember Boland, go ahead, if you have, what points you'd like to make. You need to unmute yourself, Donna. You got the last word, and then I'm calling the question because we're, yeah.
Yes, I would like to agree with Alderman, Alderwoman Emig. I do think that this needs to be given a lot of thought. We did agree to have a deeper conversation. I would like to have some alternatives in place before we start switching money around. I'm very familiar with other places that have programs, but you need to have, let's say, the mental health component in place. You need to have other components in place before you start shuffling money around. So I would rather do that than to make any kind of decision tonight. Thank you.
And I just, just as a last point, as we're, we're going to vote on this amendment, but I think that the many in our police department, certainly the most impassioned speech that I've heard in favor of O'Neill Pool was by our previous police chief, who said, please, pass this, this will make our job easier. So it's not as if that there are not many people in law enforcement that would be interested in, in addressing some of those social concerns that, that are some of the root causes of crime. At this point, we're going to call, we're going to call the question on the motion by Councilmember Carrillo, excuse me, Councilmember Crable, seconded by Councilmember Carrillo. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. This is the amended budget, reducing the police department with the numbers stated. Councilmember Matthew?
No.
Councilmember Boland?
No.
Councilmember Milawonway?
No.
Councilmember Emig?
No.
Councilmember Painter?
No.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
No.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
No.
Motion fails seven to two. There are seven nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matthew, Councilmember Boland, Councilmember Milawonway, Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Painter, Councilmember Ward, and Councilmember Bray.
Okay, now we're going to, we're going to go back to the, the, the original motion that we had that was made by Councilmember Milawonway. And that is to approve the budget. We have actually talked about staff's work. We've talked about the budget process, public input. Are there any other points that we need to make before we vote on the final budget? Councilmember Boland.
The only thing that I would like to say, I came to speak at public comment for what, four, maybe five years? And I usually was the only person that came to the public hearing to speak about the budget. So that's an official thing that we have to have, but there's plenty of opportunities to speak to their aldermen or to come to the public comment after they've reviewed the budget as after presented. So I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boland. And Councilmember Matthew, you're the other hand.
I just wanted to say thank you to Scott. I thought that this entire process was very well done. The Budget 101 series of videos was more informative and gave more information and easy to understand terms to people than we've ever had before. And the ongoing PowerPoint slides that added just an additional level of complexity each time as we went along as the budget was getting closer and closer, I thought that that was just incredibly well done and very easy for everyone to understand. So kudos to you, Scott, and your team, and thank you for making this happen.
Thank you very much. At this point, Councilmember Carrillo.
Um, yeah, I guess I just want to, for the record, state that I won't be supporting the budget on, on the basis of the increase to the police budget because it's a commitment that I made to my constituents. But in spite of that, I do want to thank Scott and his team and all of the staff, really, for, for all the work that has happened and the ways that we continue to improve public engagement through these processes. So really appreciate that.
Thanks. And obviously, I won't be mayor or on the council, but one of the things that I would certainly urge is that as you go through the next cycle, especially hopefully post-COVID, that the beginning of discussion, involvement of trade-offs and discussion amongst council members with their constituents really begin as soon as possible. And actually, in 2015, we began it on May 1st. That is, the day after the budget was passed, and then we established a budget task force and, and really began that, that budget discussion as early as possible. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion that was made by Councilmember Milawonway?
Yes, and seconded by Councilmember Boland. Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
No.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
There's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries eight to one. At this point, we're going to move to item 9B. And this is also, this is pulled out, I think it's quite clear because Councilmember Emig, of course, worked for the History Museum. There was a $45,000 annual contribution. So this was pulled out for separate consideration. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Jurg, well, Mr. Gleason and then Mr. Jurgens for a brief comment about this. And then we have a three minutes, three-minute council discussion. Again, this is the, just the, the city's contribution to the McLean County History Museum, which also, of course, involves the, primarily the operation of the Route 66 Visitor Center and Museum. Mr. Gleason, any preparatory comments?
Very few, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We thought that we would provide Corporation Council, Jeff Jurgens, an opportunity just to explain and be open to any questions on this. Jeff?
Any, anything you want to add, Jeff?
Not really. I think it's, it's been, you know, pretty well explained. If anybody does have any questions, happy to answer them, but just out of an abundance of caution, carve this out. We could have done this in a way that maybe required this expenditure to come back to the council. But, but at the end of the day, we thought it best to just carve it out of the budget, and so that's why it's in front of you now separately.
Okay, is, is, are there any questions of, excuse me, I was about to sneeze. Is there any questions of Mr. Jurgens or a motion? Councilmember Crable?
I move to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Bray. Crable and Bray, any discussion or questions? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on this McLean County History Museum motion?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonway?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Motion carries. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move on to item 9C. And there's a memo of understanding and a resolution authorizing us to enter into this with the Town of Normal, McLean County, Illinois State, and Illinois Wesleyan University to support innovation throughout the region. We have a brief presentation by our city manager and deputy city manager, and then up to a 10-minute council discussion. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an item that we thought we
Sorry, can I, sorry, I need to recuse myself because of ISU.
Okay, so you can, you can just mute yourself.
Okay.
And we, we won't call on you. Okay. Mr. Gleason.
Jeff, a question across the table. Employees of Wesleyan and ISU on an item like this, do they need to recuse themselves?
That's been our practice that, that we have. Employees can have conflicts. This, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at this specific agreement. I don't think there's, I think this is a cooperation. I'm not sure if there's funding in here or not, but
Just, just to clarify with that, Jeff, I have never done that. I have never accused myself of being an employee at Illinois Wesleyan or have refused to sign the documents. That's just at my end. I think that, that for the reasons you've mentioned, and also it's I don't know that I have a financial vested interest in it. I'm a tenured full professor, so no matter what I do, I'm, I'm sort of stuck.
Yeah, it, it's really a case-by-case analysis, but certainly nothing wrong with an abundance of caution and, and doing that as, as to what the council member did.
Okay.
And I just, thank you, Jeff. I just want to make sure, since we had two other employees, and I did not think that they needed to recuse themselves on this item. Real quick, this is something that we want to celebrate as a community. The deputy city manager has run the lead on this from the staff side, and then also Alderman Matthew is someone that's been very engaged in this as well. Wanted to do this as a resolution just to shine some light on the efforts that are occurring cooperatively with the different entities on this topic. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Again, as the manager said, actually, for some time now, there've been a number of different entities who have been working together, really to, to build upon the hotbed of innovation that, that we, we currently exist as. And I don't think that's an overstatement of what's happening here. There are a number of different entities who are here, as we've mentioned, the universities and the community colleges. There are also, you know, our municipalities in the county as well are really working to better utilize technology as a way to make us better. And just as importantly, I think it's important to say that, you know, we're wanting to make sure that what we do as it relates to innovation and the opportunities that come with it is distributed equitably throughout our community as well. And so, I mean, if you really think about the things that are happening, not just in Bloomington, but also in our, with our friends to the north and in the county as well, there's a lot of stuff happening as it relates to technological innovation. I mentioned the universities and colleges, including the community colleges. I think there's been a lot of news about what's happening in Rivian. The insurance entities that exist here as well are going to play a major role in, as we start to talk about self-driving vehicles and innovation related to that. They're going to play a major role in that as well. And again, we, over the last year, as a, as a, as a city government, we've brought several items to you related to how we can better use technology to serve residents and meet them where they are. And so there's a lot happening. This memo memorializes that and provides a framework for how we will operate together. It does not represent a commitment of funding. It does not represent our saying we will commit to any specific projects. It's just us working together to, to, to show the world all that we have to offer as it relates to technology and innovation. And again, the manager mentioned Alderman, Matthew has been heavily involved in this, and in the beginning, really led a lot of the efforts and has led a lot of the efforts. And so I'll assume he'll speak to this as well, but we're excited about this and what it's going to represent. If approved, sorry.
Thank you. Is there a motion, or before we move to Alderman Matthew?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Painter. Any discussion? Jamie?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Tim and Billy. Also want to give a shout out to Craig Macbeth, our director of IT. He's been involved in this and helping along as we've gone. Started out with some conversations that Maboka and I had at IML, the Illinois Municipal League, I think, three years ago, and we started with a smart street lighting initiative, and it's just continued to grow from there as we have worked significantly with the Town of Normal and the county and, and really just trying to make sure everybody's on the same page as we're driving technology forward so that, you know, while we may not always work together in the same projects, if everybody's on the same page in terms of what we're working on, we might not have redundancy of efforts, right? One example of that would be body cam testing. And the town and the city ended up on two different technology platforms for body cams. When if we had this framework in place earlier, we might have been able to do some testing together and end up on a single platform that might, would have been easier for everybody to use in the entire area. There's just a lot of positive things that I think are going to come out of this. I think our 5G design efforts, you know, initially came out of this. And I just wanted to give a thank you to Councilmember Kevin McCarthy from the town of Vasseau and City Manager Pam Reese up there, Charlie Etamala from Illinois State, and Craig Jackson from Illinois State. And also And also, regional planning in the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce have all been involved in this as well. The initial five entities named on this MOU are there because one of our goals is that we want to apply to a national organization called MetroLab. And MetroLab is a series of partnerships between universities and the the towns the universities are situated in. So we want to be part of that framework and and be able to work within MetroLab as well. And we needed an MOU in place that we were going to cooperate, work with the universities as the next step to apply to MetroLab. Again, we don't have any projects lined up 100% right now, but we have a wish list of things we would like to try to do in the future. And everything will have to come back before council before we do that. But, you know, like I said, the 5G and the smart street lighting are both kind of part of this project right now, and council's already approved those, and we're already working on both those efforts.
Great. Thank you very much. Our discussion time's up here. We're going to go ahead and go back to the main motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue. Nope, sorry. And you said you wouldn't call his name. I apologize. Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Mboka, you can come back, man. There we go. All right. At this point, we're going to move on to item nine D. And it's consideration action to approve the purchase of air burners. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason. We have a brief presentation from Public Works and then a brief council discussion. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Public Works Director, Kevin Cothe, has a brief presentation. It's a continuation of the three prior presentations regarding our solid waste, our bulk pickup, some of the challenges that we're facing financially. This is truly the first step to try to correct some of the shortfall on the budget side, the expense side versus revenues. And then, just as an FYI, there's going to be presentation number four next week at the Committee of the Whole with other staff recommendations. Kevin, floor is yours.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. I'll share my screen here, and we'll get started with a brief PowerPoint. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is very exciting to get to this point where we can look at actually saving some money by purchasing our own air burner. And tonight, I'm going to share some details about what an air burner is and what that looks like. And the next slide here, here we go. So the proposal is to obtain an I EPA permit and implement an air curtain burner. And the picture there in the lower left is about the size of a large dumpster. And it's a self-contained apparatus. And you can see the picture on the right is an air burner that is is operating and burning. And by doing this disposal work ourself, we'll be able to eliminate a private vendor that we currently use for that purpose. And the initial estimated cost is basically 164,000 to purchase the air burner and get it in place. And then our estimated annual cost for operating it is just under $9,000. So you can see in this graph that we've been spending, you know, upwards of $200,000 for the last several years as actual expenses, and our budget is 300,000 this year and for next year for brush disposal. That is just the cost that we pay the vendor to receive our brush. We deliver it to him. And here is a chart that shows the annual savings based on our costs. You can see the cost of the air burner, the ash rake, the different pieces that we need to go with it, including fencing around it. But we had in the budget this year to purchase a tub grinder. And the tub grinders are very expensive. We had 460,000 in the budget this year. Well, you can see that the the cost savings just implementing the air curtain burner is significant. And so when we when we look at the, you know, savings in the future, you can see that that's going to make a big difference on our expenses for our solid waste budget. The air curtain burner, this graphic kind of explains what it does. The material goes into the the box, and there's an air curtain that goes across the top of the box. It's by a blower. And it contains the smoke and everything inside that box and and makes it burn very completely. It's very effective and efficient way to burn brush. In this picture, you can see an illustration of the air burner at the lower part of the image. And at the top of the image, you see a regular brush pile. And you'll notice that the smoke coming off the brush pile, you can see in the picture. But the air burner box, even though it's glowing red inside, is not giving off visible smoke. Here's some other pictures of an air burner in operation. And you can see in the upper left, a loader that is putting material into the air burner. The upper right is that air curtain that's blowing across the burn burn box that makes the fire burn very, very hot, very quickly, and very completely containing the smoke. In the lower left, you can see also there's there's just no smoke coming off that that's really visible. And then in the lower right, you can see what they call the ash rake pulling the the ashes, what's left of the burn out. And and those ashes are product that can be used on fields as a type of fertilizer. So the the benefits of the air burner include that it releases less particulate matter than the wood grinders. So about a fourth of the particulate matter that a wood grinder does. You don't think about the wood grinders that much as far as making particulate matter, but in the grinding operation, they do give off, you know, the the wood chips, but also wood dust off of that and so forth. So about a fourth the amount compared to a wood wood grinder. The air curtain burners, they have a lower opacity limit from the EPA, so the opacity is less than 10%. So what that means is the smoke that you see, very little smoke. It's it's not something that obstructs the vision like a traditional firewood. And then waste reduction, 95 to 98% waste reduction, meaning 100 tons of wood would equate to about two to five tons of ash. So very effective at reducing that wood pile. The ash can be used as a soil additive. Wood chips require additional processing. Quite often, wood chips are actually run through a grinder at least twice to make them something that people would want to use for mulch. Releases of nitrous oxide that depends on the fuel source type of equipment. These air burners do. The one that we're looking at uses a small diesel engine, and we'll get to that. But the amount of fuel and operating, you know, fuel that is needed to run it is is much reduced because you're just running a blower instead of trying to grind all that material. The operating cost, much less. And then, you know, one operator can load with a loader the the material into that trench burner. And we plan to use our existing staff to do that on a on a weekly basis. The biogenic carbon dioxide release is the same. In other words, carbon dioxide contained in the wood itself is is no different whether it's released immediately or whether it's released through composting. And then the air burner uses significantly less fuel, meaning that to power a fan, a 59 horsepower diesel engine, will use about eight and a half liters per hour and burn eight tons of brush an hour. Whereas the grinder needs a bigger engine, 1,000 horsepower, and uses 113.5 liters per hour for about 16 tons of brush per hour capacity. The location we're looking at to place the air burner is on the west side, southwest side of Bloomington. And you can see the star is at the end of Rivian Motorway off of Six Points Road. Heartland Hills is up in the northwest corner. One of the requirements for the EPA permit is that the air burner needs to be at least 1,000 feet away from any residential. And so this this map is pre-zoomed out. And so the the farm to the left of the star, that is well over 1,000 feet away. And the residences to the east, those are are much more than 1,000 feet away. And we plan on using that Rivian Motorway as as a place to store the brush during the week and then run the air burner typically once a week is what we're thinking to dispose of the brush that's been accumulated. And then the ash can be disposed of. We even had an offer from the farmer out there already that would like it if if we want to provide that ash to him to put on his fields and stuff. We have started to talk to some of the people that are nearby. The farmer, obviously, is the closest resident, so we've spoken to him. We haven't been able to speak to everybody yet, but have started that conversation. And once we have permission to move forward with this, we'll go ahead and submit the IEP permit. The lead time on that is about 90 days. They have to turn around the permit. And the air burner itself, the lead time on it can be up to four months to get it delivered. So just a real quick overview of what the air burner is, what it does, how it operates, and where we're looking to put it. And I'll turn back for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin. We appreciate your hard work on this, and same thing with you, Mr. Gleason and all your staff. At this point, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Matthew.
Thanks, Mayor. Kevin, I had some people who reached out to me in the last couple of days, and and I apologize for not sending you an email on this earlier, but there is two primary concerns. From one group, they were concerned about trash that might be getting mixed in with the brush. It's pretty common to see on the side of the road that we've got bulk brush and branches put out there, and then there ends up being trash mixed into that just from blowing around. And is that or how is that sorted out prior to being loaded in the machine? So that was one question. And the second question was on staffing and and how how this was going, was this actually going to save money when you took into effect that you've got to now take the brush and drive it a couple of miles outside of town? And you've got that time plus fuel to get it out there, and then one or two people on site to run this thing? Where did you guys come up with the, you know, the question is, is that $9,000 a year to operate, is that including staff time? For or is that just like the motor and maintenance of the motor? I mean, because I think that's all part of this ROI, right? Our labor for our employees is our single biggest expense in the city. So how did you guys figure that in?
We were figuring on using the existing staff to to run that. And, you know, yes, the, you know, distance out there, we've looked at that as well. And it's it's pretty similar, you know, it just depends on where you're coming from and what part of town. In in some ways, it's closer than where we're taking it today. In other cases, it's going to be a little bit farther. But overall, the idea is is that we would use the existing staff to to run it. Obviously, we need a operator out there to run the loader and and possibly a labor to help, like you said, to pick out trash or whatever might be dumped in with the load if if that is necessary. But we were we were looking that we could, you know, use our existing staff under our existing time to to operate that. There may be times that, you know, like, for instance, with the big storms where we had the all the extra brush to collect that we're going to have to run it more days, and and there might be a little bit of overtime with that to to get all that disposed of. But under the regular brush pickup, we think that we can use our existing staff just fine and and get that burned on a weekly basis.
Okay, so you don't think there's a position that we're going to have to backfill because we're pulling somebody from a different area of Public Works?
Yeah, we we don't think that at this point, yes. So we think we can do it with the existing staff.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, Councilmember Ime?
Yes, thank you. I got some questions too, right before I came here, and you answered one of them. But could you just reiterate that this particular process is environmentally sound?
Yes. The air burner, like I say, is is very efficient with the the air curtain and and containing the smoke and doing a complete burn of everything that's in there. You know, there's, I've reached out to some others like Michael Brown for comments and that type of thing. But, you know, there's some differing opinions, obviously, on wood wood chips versus air burning. But honestly, there's there's so much wood chip material that even parks, I I checked with Dave Lamb, and they have wood chip available for, you know, our citizens for free. It's not the finer chip that's been shipped twice. It's chipped once, but they can't even get rid of it. So it really, part of this becomes an issue of just disposing of all the material. You know, there's just so much brush that we collect, especially from like an ice storm, that type of thing, that, you know, it it takes extra effort, like I say, to chip it twice to really get a product that people really want. And so there's extra costs involved with the with the wood grinder, with the tub grinder as well, to make that better product. And so, you know, this is a very efficient way to reduce the material to ash that can be used for fertilizer on fields.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion? Donna?
Yeah, I have a few comments. This is going to be located, not exactly in my ward, but in the the county, right outside my ward. There's there's an elementary school there. Is that farther out than, what is it, the 1,000 feet or?
1,000 feet, yes. And it is further out. We we checked that. It's, yeah.
Okay, okay. And the other thing as I was considering was safety. As far as can some teenager that is going to turn into an arsonist, go out there and have access to, you know, the limbs that are sitting out that could have a brush fire that was not intended?
The, you know, the road at just south of Six Points, the road is actually gated. Yeah, so, you know, it it would, it would not be impossible to do it, but it'd be very difficult because the that is gated and closed off. And it's out, it's really, if you drive out there, you'll notice that the the road drops off as you head south. So there's, you know, right there by Six Points, there's actually a little bit of a rise in the hill, and you can't even see really
Okay.
all the way back down there. So it's really kind of kind of hidden from sight. And like I say, we plan to, you know, run it on a weekly basis. And, you know, some some of the brush is a little bit green, too, that gets taken out there. Some of it's drier. Wouldn't say it's impossible that it could happen, but we we think that we have it, you know, pretty well secured.
Okay. I'm happy with the cost savings, and I think that this mechanism is a good idea. But I was just worried about when you said that you're going to do it once a week, that all this brush is going to sit there. And I'm concerned about safety. That's all. Thank you.
Kevin, I just have one question. How confident are you about the the cost savings?
We've worked, you know, it's it's not just myself, but our staff has looked at it extensively and talked with other communities. And we're we're comfortable that we can make this work with our existing staff.
Okay, are there, is there a motion then? Moved by Councilmember Painter, is that, is that correct? Second by Councilmember Bowlin, is that correct? I see the the two already. Any discussion, comments? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to item E now, and that I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason in a second. And we have a brief presentation and brief five minutes, five minutes council discussion and presentation on the COVID. on the COVID nineteen, uh, amendment, or excuse me, local emergency ordinance regarding water shut offs, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know that information was provided to the council about this amendment, but it is regarding, uh, water shut offs. Uh, some of the Bloomington numbers, uh, that we wanted to share, uh, from March of twenty twenty, we had, uh, thirteen hundred, uh, forty-nine shut offs, uh, for non-payment, and, uh, that has grown to about twenty-three hundred, uh, that are non-payment status, uh, for us, uh, currently. Uh, city staff is recommending the ordinance has be amended to allow gradual restarting of water shut offs. Under the revised plan, shut off notices would start going out, uh, with the first shut offs not occurring until June first of twenty twenty-one, so here in a couple of months. Knowing that this will impact a number of residents, amendment also authorizes you, uh, myself as city manager, to issue an executive order establishing relaxed repayment terms to avoid shut offs. Some of the other issues, uh, concerns with continuing the, uh, suspension. Uh, residents will continue to fall further and further behind. Uh, more people are, uh, falling further behind despite improvement in the unemployment rate. Uh, in April of twenty twenty, it was thirteen percent. February of this year, unemployment rate was down to a five-point-one percent. We realize that that's not a catch-all, and that does, that's not indicative of, uh, some of the, uh, true hardship cases that are out there in the community. Landlords are also jointly liable for water bills and have no recourse if their tenants are not paying, uh, the water bill. Uh, we've heard some public comment, we've received, uh, some outreach, uh, via email. I know the elected officials have, as I, uh, and I think, uh, Scott Rathman and, uh, uh, other staff members have. There is currently assistance available to assist customers that are behind. We're not sure, uh, when this, uh, funding will, uh, uh, not be available any longer from some of the other entities, but we've talked in the past about when that day does come. Uh, the city could, uh, provide some additional funding to assist, uh, for these programs. Uh, the amount that is passed due, it is substantial. It's one-point-two million dollars, uh, currently. It should be noted that the utility bill, uh, pays for more than just water usage, uh, and it also includes the water sales tax, sewer for Bloomington, sewer for Benward, uh, refuse and, uh, stormwater. Uh, something else, uh, other communities are doing, uh, some similar programs, uh, that we reached out to in, uh, making their recommendation to council. And then to the, uh, special repayment terms, uh, to take into consideration the impact of the pandemic, the city would simultaneously offer more generous repayment terms to avoid shutting water off, uh, via, uh, the city manager executive order, if it's approved. Uh, these terms would also include, uh, lowering the city's standard down payment of fifteen percent, fifty-five-zero percent of the total utility bill to twenty-five percent. The city's current informal repayment terms will also be laid out in the executive order. Uh, that includes giving residents six months to pay back the amounts, waiving any interest if the repayment agreement is fulfilled, waiving any penalties if the repayment agreement is, uh, refilled as well. I know I went through that quick. It's something that, uh, council had in hand prior to, uh, the meeting, uh, but wanted to, uh, read that, uh, and open this up to, uh, questions, comments. Might ask, uh, Jeff Juergens to also assist if, uh, there's questions of corporation counsel. Mayor?
Just, just to clarify, if, um, there, there've been some discussion, uh, I don't know what the council's pleasure might be, but if we do receive money for, uh, grant money that we expect from the federal government, we could use a small portion of that to, uh, defray some of these expenses at a later point, regardless of what we decide tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Gleason?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, questions, comments, or a motion? Uh, Councilmember Correa?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, while some of the unemployment numbers are, are looking up, um, I guess I, I just, it bears repeating that poverty is compounding, and so folks that have fallen behind on certain payments have had to spend more money, paying late fees and interest and on and on. And so like, it isn't a thing that is just going to clear out just because somebody is able to like, ha- you know, have a job again after the pandemic. And so, um, this feels very much like we're like rushing into, um, yeah, and back into a punitive system when, when a, a good bunch of our community is still in crisis. And so, um, I saw an email from Councilmember Matthew, um, suggesting something similar to what was, what, what you just mentioned, Mayor, around, uh, using some of that federal money to zero out the balances. I think that that would be hugely beneficial to those folks, uh, because while we can't help with everything and know that folks have not been able to qualify for assistance um, on a lot of things, like, this is the one thing that is in our hands, it's the one utility that is still publicly owned, and so like, we should use that, um, as much as possible to, to help our residents out. And I, I just don't, you know, one-point-two million is a lot, and also in, as we just discussed, the budget, which is a huge amount of money, like, I mean, relatively speaking, it, it isn't that much, and I know that it would be a, a meaningful contribution to a lot of those households, um, that have fallen behind. And so, um, I would, I would prefer that we hold off on this, um, and, and not vote to resume shut offs until we explore the possibilities for, for some kind of debt forgiveness program.
Thank you. Uh, other comments or a motion? Councilmember Bray?
I, I, I'm thankful for the, um, city's careful approach to this. I think there's a good balance that's been struck here at this time, perhaps, uh, pursuing what, um, federal money might do and what kind of qualifying, um, criteria would be, um, appropriate, because we must account for the federal funds, of course, that are given to us. It could be an exercise done at a later time, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this as presented by staff.
Okay, is there a second to this motion? Second by Councilmember Bowlin, uh, further discussion? Crable and Matthew, in that order, Councilmember Crable and then Matthew.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I reiterate what's been said. I would be against any, uh, shut offs at this time. I think people are still hurting, um, getting aid to people is taking time so that they can, you know, get caught up, you know, with their, with their bills. You know, the, the unemployment rate is still pretty high when it was two-point-eight, I think, before, uh, you know, this, the, the pandemic. I'd like to wait to see if we can get some federal or state funds even, um, to, to help the city out with, with that. But, but at this point, I would be against any, uh, starting any shut offs.
Uh, Councilmember Matthew, and then I believe Councilmember Ward had her hand up too.
And first of all, clarification, we said that we were going to suspend, um, shut offs and, you know, late payments and stuff for water. What date did we originally say we were going to suspend that through? Did we, did we ever set a date on that originally?
Jeff?
Yeah, i- in terms of, um, originally, we did two different things. We stopped interest and penalties. We resumed those, um, there was an amendment back where we resumed those, and I, I, I have to look at my book here, but I think it was, um, and Scott Rathman can probably correct me off the top of his head, but I think we started charging interest and penalties around the end of September. Uh, he, he's shaking his head yes, of twenty twenty. So, um, this would again be a, um, you know, if somebody entered into a repayment agreement, we would again, you know, waive those, those penalties and interest.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still leaning towards, uh, agreeing that May thirty-first seems, uh, a little bit quick. I mean, is the goal then, is that we're trying to get people to sign up for some sort of a plan where they're going to work and, and, and set a priority that at some point they can start paying this off? Is that really what the intention is here, that we say that, you know, we're, we're trying to emerge from the, the turtle shell of COVID and, uh, uh, create a plan of how to get people back on their feet?
It is accurate, Alderman Matthew, uh, it's giving, uh, quite, quite a bit of latitude to, uh, uh, negotiate, I, I guess, if you will, uh, different plans, uh, with residents, uh, trying to avoid being punitive, uh, by allowing, uh, uh, repayment under different, um, options. And, uh, then also, one of the questions that you had, Alderman Matthew, uh, was, uh, how to, uh, use the federal funding. Uh, that's always an option, and as we get clarity on how, uh, the money that we'll receive at some point in the future, uh, that's a larger discussion on, uh, the use of that money for the city, but that is also an option.
And, and do we have any idea of a timeframe of when we might? I know that there's not been a lot of clarity yet, but is there, uh, like, we think we're going to have the rules in place for this money by X date? Has that happened yet?
I'm not comfortable, uh, saying that, uh, you know, we watch, uh, all eyes are on Springfield and DC. Uh, we reach out to the, uh, congressional delegation, and, uh, we don't, uh, have, uh, that date. I wish we did.
Okay. Not knowing that, then I would say that I am not comfortable supporting this right now. Uh, I would like to know more information from the federal government in terms of, uh, what that looks like. I, I know that we need to do something, uh, but I, I guess I just want to see a little bit more time until we get some information on that relief coming our way and, and how we could use that. So I don't, I, I will not be supporting this one. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, anyone, uh, Molly, did you want to, did you have a hand up?
I, I am really interested in getting more information before, um, deciding to, to cut things off. And, um, this is another instance of that. It feels to me like, like there are some unanswered questions about federal and state dollars. It feels like there are some, some fuzzy areas about what other sources of funding there might be from either the township or from, you know, other NGOs. Um, and it seems like those, those pieces of information need to be in place if we're going to actually put a payment plan in place for people. I really appreciate that, the, you know, the efforts to try to come up with a, a, a good, solid way of creating payment plans, but it feels like a responsible way to act and includes, has to include some, some answers to those questions. And frankly, the pandemic isn't over yet. We're, um, you know, we're at a place where our hospitals are, you know, seeing more COVID patients than, than we have in a very long time. And I think that we're fooling ourselves by thinking that we're completely done with this, and I would really hate for us to, to go backwards instead of forward. So I also cannot support this right now.
Okay, right. At this point, unless there are other questions, we're going to go ahead and call the question? Oh, Donna? Oh, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Donna and then, um, Boca?
Uh, yeah, the reason I seconded this was primarily, I think it's good to have a payment plan in place. So, I mean, I'm speaking personally. If I know that I have a payment plan in place, like putting something on layaway, and I know that I can, you know, start pla- paying it off, that gives kind of a peace of mind and, um, to get to plan ahead. I, I'm not saying that there should, it should happen right now, but I do think putting a plan in place should happen now, but the repayment not necessarily happen now. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Seems clear to me, Donna.
Okay.
Uh, Boca, and if, if anybody else needs to talk, we're, we're way over time, so I'm going to need to extend this if we need to talk about this more. Uh, Councilmember Mila Wambway?
Sure, I, I, what I wanted, uh, you know, um, City Manager Gleason to speak to is, one, what the terms of the repayment plans would be. I mean, I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but I, I'm kind of curious about, um, how, you know, if we would communicate to residents, you know, is it one time, second time? If we don't hear from them, because sometimes I know when we do mail things or communicate with residents, you know, people might not get it. So I just wanted to, to understand how the process would work.
Tim?
Thank you. I, I, I probably covered, uh, that too quick, so I'm just going to go ahead and read that portion of the email that I shared with everyone. The special repayment, uh, terms, "To take into consideration the impact of the pandemic, the city would simultaneously offer more generous repayment terms to avoid shutting water off, uh, via the city manager in, uh, an executive order, if that's granted." These terms would include lowering the city's standard down payment of fifty percent of the total utility bill to twenty-five percent. The city's current informal repayment terms will, will also be laid out in an executive order that includes giving residents six months to pay back the amounts, waiving any interest if the repayment agreement is fulfilled, waiving any penalties if the repayment agreement is fulfilled. The city manager would also have the authority to settle accounts in special circumstances. It is unclear what the settlements would look like, but would leave open the possibility of accepting a percentage of the total bill for residents that can show they were unemployed and sought but were denied assistance, landlords that had tenants that skipped out of the tenancy, leaving the landlord solely responsible without any recourse and/or any other unique circumstances due to the, uh, pandemic. So trying to keep this wide open, but as we look at other communities that are, uh, looking, uh, at, uh, some utility billing, we're seeing that some of the communities see that this is a point to at least do something. Uh, and it's not suggesting that we're done with this yet, and it's not suggesting that the federal funding at some point uh, will have clarity, and that discussion can come before council to see if the uses, uh, would be permissible for this as well. But we just thought that the timing might be right, but also leaving open, uh, that, uh, understanding the council's appetite to, uh, uh, be as, um, you know, to allow uh, our residents recover as best they can. And we know that there are extreme hardships out there, and those are the ones that would fall into the category that we get extremely generous and, uh, potentially waive in its entirety.
Okay, so quick follow-up question. So what if you don't hear from the residents that you've contacted? What happens?
Under cir- under normal circumstances, it would go to collection.
But this is, this isn't normal, right? Okay, all right, at this point, unless we have a motion to extend, because we've gone instead of five minutes, we're at almost seventeen minutes. Um, I'm going to go ahead and, unless there's objection, to call the question on the motion that was made in front of us. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matt? Sorry, Councilmember Matthew?
No.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mila Wambway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
No.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
No.
Councilmember Ward?
No.
Councilmember Crable?
No.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Yep, motion fails five to four. There are five nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Councilmember Matthew, Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Correa, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Crable.
Thank you very much, and this, obviously, uh, uh, I think based on what we've heard this evening, that this is something that, uh, especially if we, we get a little bit, w- we know a little bit more as the new mayor and council take over, that this might very well come back, especially if it's combined with some sort of, um, clarity in terms of the kinds of assistance we might be able to provide from the federal government. And, uh, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gleason for a city manager's report. And again, we have, uh, the, the only items we have left are city managers', uh, comments, mayor's comments, and then council member comments, and then we'll adjourn. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Phil, if you would, uh, put up the first slide. And we have the Spring Fever Market, April seventeenth, nine AM to, uh, twelve PM. Uh, it's downtown, uh, for the, uh, farmer's market. Next slide, please. Unlock a piece of history, uh, celebrating the history of downtown Bloomington during National Historic Preservation Month. Uh, May first, uh, May first Friday, which is, uh, May seventh, and that will be five PM to eight PM. And then, uh, would like to, uh, make this announcement, uh, and it's an exciting one. I think everybody knows or recalls that, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Brian Moore retired in, uh, November of last year. And Eric West, uh, had, uh, filled the interim position. We started the recr- And Eric West had filled the interim position. We started the recruitment about six weeks ago. There was a national search that drew applicants from, you know, all across the United States. We had 40 qualified applicants. Interview team interviewed applicants and the decision was made to appoint Eric West as a fire chief. That will be effective, truly effective yesterday on Sunday, the 11th. But making that announcement to the community this afternoon. And I know that Eric is on the call tonight and would like to give him a couple of minutes to speak. But very excited about Eric being the fire chief. The interview team, real quick, was made up of the deputy city manager, HR director, Nicole Albertson, chief diversity and inclusion officer, Michael Hurt, and then also Decatur's fire chief called on him to participate in this. And while we had very qualified candidates from across the country, Eric rose to the top. We had a couple of internal candidates and they both were extremely strong. But Eric was the one that I selected and congratulations to him. Eric, do you want to say a couple of words?
Thanks, city manager Gleason. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Excuse me. I'd like to thank you, thank the city manager for giving me the opportunity to lead the, the members of the Bloomington Fire Department. I know he had many good candidates to choose from, and I'm truly honored that he chose me. As almost a 30-year member of this department, I've seen a lot of change in the last 20 years, 29 years. And I can tell you right now, the city of Bloomington Fire Department is, if not the best, is one of the best departments in the state. And I'm excited to be the next fire chief of the department. I'm very fortunate that the last two fire chiefs did a lot of work to get the department to where we're at this point. I know there's a lot of work ahead to maintain the level and my staff and I will continue to work, look for ways to keep improving and moving the department forward to provide the best service possible to the citizens of Bloomington. I also know that without the support of the mayor, council and city manager, the department would not be in such a good shape as we are. Myself, my staff, members of the department, thank you for that support. I know there are items that will need to be brought before the council, and I look forward to working with all of you as we continue to look to improve the department. Again, I want to thank city manager Gleason for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I got two more quickies, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to, we're clapping again for congratulations. Thank you, Eric. Congratulations. Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Two other things I wanted to share, and I think people saw this on social media and the media. Realtor.com, nationally internationally known company ranked the city of Bloomington as number one for affordable housing in a, you know, the, an age group, I think it's like 24 to 35. I mean, number one out of all the different communities that they could have chose. I think there were 800 total, and we were number one. And that's something to be very proud of. The deputy city manager, Billy Tyus, I want to share with everyone that he was recently appointed to the Illinois City Managers Association Board of Directors. So congratulations to Billy as well. Representing the city of Bloomington extremely well. So congrats, Billy.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Congratulations also to Billy. And one of my comments, my comment's going to be very brief. I did want to note that about Realtor.com being number one out of 800 or so communities. That doesn't mean that we can't do more things, that we don't have people that are struggling, but we know that it also means that given the size of our community, we can do more, we can do a lot better to be a model for other communities to follow. I did want to, again, congratulate, last time I spoke, we didn't know who was going to be the mayor. And we have one congratulate Mayor-elect Maboka Milawambwe. And there will be a transition ceremony, swearing-in ceremony, May 1st. I'll call the meeting to order. Maboka will be sworn in and I'll turn it over to him as the other council members are, are sworn in. I want to congratulate, although he had a really tough, tough, really close race, I want to congratulate Jamie Mathie and barely squeaking out. And also councilmember Ward for winning in her race. Congratulations to you. And then the, the new council members in wards three, five, and nine, and we certainly look forward to having them sworn in on May 1st. That's all I have. Any aldermanic comments? I'm sorry. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I, I guess it's kind of ironic that the new fire chief was put into place because the Saturday before Easter, there was a fire in the house across the street from us. And the response was very quick. Everyone escaped. The pets were rescued. They did a really great job getting the fire extinguished quickly, although the house is a total loss. But what, what impressed me the most for those, you know, big burly guys that can carry all that equipment, they were so sensitive and compassionate for the homeowners. Those guys are great. And then additionally, a constituent reached out to me, reached out to the fire department and then reached out to me. And she spoke with someone by the name of Eric Davidson. And as she put it, was extremely helpful, very informative and kind. So I wanted to share that with the new police chief. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Great. Any other aldermanic comments? No other aldermanic comments? Councilmember Milawambwe? Maboka, you're on mute, dude.
Oh, yep, sorry. Hazard of being on Zoom. Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I, I wanted to kind of take a moment to address the comments that were made by councilmember Carrillo towards her future colleagues, Sheila Montney and Nick Becker on election night. In my opinion, the, the behavior, the comments, and becoming of a council member. And I believe that we, we have the opportunity to reiterate what we think are appropriate standards for our behavior as council members. And again, I, I want to point out that this is not a personal thing at all. But, but I do believe that council members have the responsibility to use their words wisely. There are countless numbers of people who, young people who look up to us, constituents who expect great service from us. And I believe that they, they demand, and many of them have demanded, and, and deserve better. What I've seen in the past few days is that our community has rallied and expressed outrage against the behavior and the comments that were made. People who ordinarily did not pay much attention to deliberations of the council have reached out to me and said, you know, they've had enough. They do not want to see this kind of behavior out of our council members. So I, I believe it is important for us to act. If we do not act, you know, it would amount to a tacit approval of the behavior and the comments. So what, what I would like to, to propose is, you know, two things for the staff to, to work on immediately. One is to, to provide the council with an instrument that we would consider at a special meeting, which would allow us to, the council to formally express our disapproval of those comments and actions in the strongest terms possible. But I also would want the, the, the staff to develop a quote-unquote, and we'll say clear expectations of what is expected of a council member in the future. Thank you.
Which, Mboka, in, in order to make that happen, the, the process would be you'd need to fill out a, a council request form. At this point, you, you can, obviously, after May 1st, you can call a special meeting on your own, but those are the two options that you'd have at this point. So, but you do have the, the option, you know, over the next few weeks, if you choose to have a council request form put forward. Okay? Anything else before we, we adjourn? I'm not seeing that. Who? Carrillo and Bray. Actually, councilmember Carrillo?
Yeah, thank you for your concern. I'm, I'm quite fine with the example that I'm setting for young people in the community. So thank you for your concern. And I think your disapproval is clear. There's no need to waste anybody's time with some formal process, I don't think. But if you want to do that, then that's your prerogative.
Thank you. Councilmember Bray? And again, let's be clear that, that, by the way, these, this, this council member, I apologize, councilmember Bray, I will get to you. This is not point, counterpoint here. And councilmember, aldermanic comments are supposed to be announcements and isolated situations. So I'm going to turn to councilmember Bray. At this point, I think you have the last word.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I would also like to extend my hearty congratulations to those who won elections and also thank all those who ran. It is, it is a tough thing to run and there's a commitment there to community that should be honored as well. But again, congratulating those who won, Ward three Sheila Montney, Ward five Nick Becker, Ward nine Tom Crumpler. And, and I know I've spoken with, with most, and of course, also our mayor pro tem, Mayor-elect Maboka Milawambwe. We're a community that wants to care for one another. And so I'm thankful for our, our new fire chief. He, he has a, a long history of caring. And so I'm, I'm appreciative of that he will now serve in this important role. I would also say that I'm in agreement with the, the comments and the approach outlined by Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor-elect Milawambwe. I support the city council moving forward to address the matter that's been outlined because this is what my constituents and the majority of the community is calling for at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
But moved by councilmember Bowlin, second by councilmember Carrillo. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.